Okay, it is Tuesday, May 12, 2020. We'll call me in to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bone and a bone.
Okay. The minutes are reports received and filed.
I have April 2020 collector piece filed and sheriff piece filed and April 2020 treasures reconciliation report filed.
Okay, commissioner committee liaison reports on coming meetings and events.
So we've got our CARE Act federal funding meeting this afternoon at two. We've got the home builders association board meeting at four. Planning commission meeting at 5:15. As always, management district board meeting tomorrow at one. That's about it till next week. Things are starting to pick up again.
So I have a slit board meeting tomorrow, 11:30 in Prisberge. And then I have on here Redden Ridge advisory meeting, but I think that's been canceled.
Need to pick a date for that, but yeah, that's next week, 21st, I think is what it was.
And then I have on my scheduler calendar Hartland board meeting next week at 7:30 in the morning on 19th. So I think that's a go, so not sure where that's going to be. Try to accommodate. That's all I got.
Okay, well, I've got my policy group call, the sheriff initiates at 1:30 and then commission at 2:00. I've got the central workforce development meeting tomorrow too on my calendar, but I don't, I can't picture us meeting, but I haven't received anything canceled. Thursday morning, we're going to meet with Governor Parson at 9:30 and giving a bottle of our bicentennial bourbon and a coin. And we've got a bicentennial meeting at three. Sunday, my articles in the news Tribune. And this is after a meeting, but May 20th, we're going to do a kickoff at Lowman's Landing at 1:00 PM for the bicentennial. So anybody wants to come?
Can you put that on the calendar?
Yeah, well, I've been waiting to get permission from DNR. I can't get anything, so I think we're just going to do it.
What if we just show up?
Yeah, they'll, worst that can happen is Capitol Police will shoot us or arrest us or something.
Stand right behind you, Sam.
Commission comments? None. Bids and contracts. Mr. Eric, contract award and signing for 2020 asphalt overlay program.
Okay, we opened bids about a week and a half ago on this project and Jefferson Asphalt is the low bidder and we recommend award to them in the amount of $780,933. Is there any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Just trying to pull it up here.
Bids were considerably less than than estimated, which is a good thing. Last year was a little odd year in pricing. This year came down quite a bit, so.
Oil's down? Well, we have two bids.
Two bids. Magruder paving was the second bid.
I move that we award and sign the contract with Jefferson Asphalt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contract award and signing for 2020 chip seal program.
Okay, same thing, week and a half ago, we opened bids on the chip seal as well. And Vance Brothers is the low bidder and we'd recommend award to them in the amount of $268,162.74. And we've done work with Vance in the past. I think it was about three or four years ago. Since then, they've been Missouri Petroleum every year and Vance came in and was low this year. So good contractor and had good experience with them in the past. Bid was quite a bit, not quite a bit, just a tad bit higher than what we had estimated. And typically, we kind of go off of what last year's price was and so it just fluctuated a little bit higher this year on the chip seal.
Good?
Yep.
Move that we award and sign the chip seal contract with Vance Brothers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was absolutely quick. Tell you what, that Murphy's Ford road has started up in force.
Good thing I gotta go to the eye doctor. I left him inside.
Okay.
Oh, he already brought it up now. He's still here.
Right. Okay. Discussion approved EMS copier.
Morning. This is a copy that Brian was able to get from state bid and then actually even a lower price than what the state bid was. So it goes through a cooperative through them. So this is a color copier, so we can print our protocols, things like that. They're changing so frequently. And with the things that we're having to do, we need something where we're not trying to outsource these color copies and the quantities that we're doing right now. Our protocols are all based on color codes and stuff, so would ask for your approval.
Yeah, we talked about this. It's already been approved. We just had to get one purchased and the price, right? That's all the stuff you email to us. Brian got us a good price on this one.
I move that we approve the purchase of the copier.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, now we're moving right along. Approval and purchase of assessor copier machine and print management agreement.
So this is a, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, but we went through and took a look at the existing offering that they had and renegotiated and came up with a different configuration that was more suitable to, you know, as far as not having to sign a lease and things like that. It's also a lot less on the dollar figure. So I would ask that you approve the purchase of the copier from GFI off of state bid and then also the print management contract for $136 a month.
Questions?
No, we got emails on that as well. I think the assessor and Brian worked well together on that.
Move that we approve and sign the cash sale agreement and the copier maintenance agreement with GFI.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for accounts payable pending review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval and signing of annual grant through Missouri Energy Response Commission.
Emergency.
Emergency, what did I say?
Energy. That's all right. You were close.
Service commission. And that is the annual grant application for money, $5,000 for the LAPC Local Emergency Planning Committee through the Missouri Emergency Response Commission. It's annual. And it just basically supports the program.
Questions?
No.
Move that we approve and sign the annual grant through Missouri Emergency Response Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, signing of surplus title.
This is a vehicle from the sheriff's department originated from the prosecutor's department. If you see that on the front, the sheriff's department wants to sell this for surplus.
So they took it back or?
Prosecutor gave it to them years ago and just the title has their name on it for some reason.
Move that we sign the surplus title.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Health department to discuss summer food program inspections.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
This is our annual agreement to be able to do the sanitation inspections at the summer feeding sites and get reimbursed for them.
Is this with the city or?
No, it is with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services.
So we do the inspections for them and they reimburse us?
Correct. This is not part of our aid to local public health or public health contract. It's separate. So we get paid per inspection. Usually, there's only one or two feeding sites, but there might be more this summer with everything going on, so.
So that agreement had 10 pages, right?
Yeah, a lot of it is just the standard language.
It said page one of 1,170 and I was like, oh, fair.
I know. I think that they must have printed them all together or something. I thought the same thing when I started to print it. I was like, wait, wait.
No, I started thumbing through. I was like, I need some pictures in here. Then I got done and there was only like 11 pages. I was like, well, that said in two bags.
Yeah.
It was still interesting reading.
Oh, I bet, yeah.
You must have been really bored.
Insomnia.
Stuck at home a lot.
Yeah.
Taking all my ball tournaments away.
You stuck at home?
Ball tournaments. Started building stuff. Crosses are making too, so need to hang one up here. Okay, I'm good with it. I just, I thought, I was wondering if that was a misprint or what.
It must, yeah, they print them all together because, you know, ours is not very many pages, but it says 117.
Good, Sam?
I'm good.
Move that we approve and sign the agreement with the HSS for the summer food program inspections.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think that's all we've got. The other is our 2:00 PM, 2:30.
Jeff, you had a, I think you had a couple of things you wanted to.
Are we on to other business?
Yeah, we're on to other business.
Okay, so you brought up Murphy's Ford already. We did have some calls on that, but we haven't made any decisions to close it indefinitely or anything, just to clarify, right? And we're looking at what it's going to cost to fix it and make it safe. And that was just the one that I've got, the hill reconstruction cost and different options. I mean, it's upwards of 269,000 on that. So I guess they can still get down to the river. There's still access to use the river.
Right, we've got the concrete blocks set back ways from the river, but it's still, the road's still open. It's just that short section that goes down the bluff that we've got closed.
So they cannot use that?
They can, yeah, they can't get up and down the bluff, no.
But can they get around the barricades on the one side to be able to get to the river?
It's within walking distance. We can move, look at moving them closer if that's what we'd like to do. I know there's a lot of people who, we've been contacted also about, you know, access.
Yeah, our intent was not to block off access, to keep them from getting on that hill where.
Right.
Chris was out there the other day. I haven't been out there a long time. And it wasn't real safe back then either, but he said it's pretty shady, so.
And that's from this past winter, we had, we've had issues in the past with some washouts coming down the bluff that we've been able to repair. This last winter, they were considerably larger. So that's why we're bringing it, to be able to fix it. We're going to look, like I said, you know, in that email to you on the cost estimate, it's considerable amount of money and we'd just like to have your input before we go forward and do anything with it. You know, if we do any improvements, any construction improvements to try and widen it, I think we're opening ourselves up to liability if we don't install guardrail on it. It doesn't have anything right now, but the only thing that protecting vehicles is trees growing up around there. You know, like I said, we're getting the phone calls too, so.
Yeah, I just may have wanted to clarify that we weren't blocking it up using the river.
What I'll have Larry Bishop do is take a look and see if we can move those blocks closer to the, to the river on the north side. The south side, we can't. I mean, it's right there at the top of the hill where it turns and goes down the bluff. But the north side, we could look at possibly moving it closer to the river to where they could, you know, be closer walking.
That's what everybody, it's not so much, they, they fish down there, they put canoes in, they swim down there. So I think it's, it's all recreational.
It's, it's pretty area riding.
Oh, it is. I, we used to go down there way back when.
What'd y'all do?
We drank, we drank beer and shot our 22s and swam.
I was gonna let you say you were boating.
Yeah, we, it was all, it was all health related.
Statute of limitations.
We were fighting COVID-19 and we didn't even know that's what we were fighting.
All right, before we get too far down the rabbit hole.
So I think we could even take the barricades off the north side and put them, just block off the hill going up, up the hill. Because it's really, I mean, the ford's fine, the area across the ford is fine. It's just the hill that's the problem.
Yeah, that's the issue. If we, if we, we don't want them getting on hill. We've had vehicles go off of that in the past. It's been a number of years now, I'd say probably. I'm not sure if Eric was there when we, the last, so it's been then last, you know, 11, 12, 10, 11 years. We had a young man go off of there. Luckily, no one was hurt, so. We could take, like I said, we could have Larry just block off the bluff side and put it on the other side, so.
And then, I don't know, I mean, it is pretty shady, but I, I don't know. I mean, it was a, it's a goat path, is basically what it is. It was never a county road, probably. It's something that we, we picked up over time. I mean, it's probably just a farmer access that they crossed the river there and went up the bluff.
Yeah, well, it's one of these deals, it's bad enough trying to go up with a, you know, small vehicle or pickup or, or car, but I don't know if I'm brave enough to try and climb into a grader or something, try and go down that thing to maintain it. So that's, it's, it's narrow and I don't want to see anybody get hurt, especially our employees, so.
Right now, we just don't have the money to, to.
Not for that.
No, so, but let's give it, let's give it to conservation. Let them make it a, or.
It's an idea.
It is pretty. I mean, it really is. It's a nice area.
Okay, that's all I want to do is just a little clarification about it, that we're just closing it down. Anything else about that?
Yeah, I don't know what you're going to do on the north side there. I mean, it's pretty rough with the barricades to the, to the ford, but I mean, if that's always a, a bad deal, I mean, I don't know why we just couldn't dig it out and pour a little more concrete there or something.
On the?
North side?
North side there.
Between the ford, between the ford and the barricades, looks like it gets pretty muddy in there.
When the creek gets up, and it, the problem is, Chris, is with the barricades up to the water, when the creek's got up, we haven't been in there cleaning that up, so we can get it back in decent shape. You know, get some rock in there and get it bladed off. Every time the creek comes up, it settles in there as much, just like a dozen metals for bomb, all the others. And we just have to get down there and get it cleaned off, so.
Well, that's what I was saying, you know, maybe we just look at pouring another little section. I mean, river backs up way up in there, but.
But even with concrete, yeah, even with concrete, we've got to get in there and clean it off because it'll end up with six to 12 inches of mud over, depending on the storm event that came through, so. Otherwise, we get people stuck right there that they know they're on concrete, but it's still an issue, so. I'll give it to Larry Bishop and we'll get the barricades moved closer, our permit on the other side of the ford there where they still have the access.
Yep, be good.
Okay, thank you all. Thanks.
All right, so done with that one. So another fun one. We had emails coming back. Like you said, one of the bills, there was eight million coming back to the counties for reimbursement. So I was just curious where we were at as far as, do we have everything submitted? Are we up to date? It used to be we were maybe two months out as far as submitting requests for our reimbursement for prisoner pre-3:00 AM. So are we still up to date on that? Because if that money comes out, I have a feeling they're going to take care of whoever's in line next.
The last month that I am billing for is July of 2019.
So we're usually like two months behind and now more like 12 months behind in our level. Okay, so what are we waiting on on that? Because we need to get that stuff put together and submitted.
I don't know. It's the circuit clerk that builds it and then she gets information from the sheriff.
Okay.
How much are we in arrearses?
What do you mean?
Well, how much do they owe us? How much do they owe Cole County?
Well, we've only built through July and they're only, I think, two, three months behind. I don't know what they expect dollar amount. I don't have it in front of me. So they're only three months behind where we're at, so July, I think May is the last one, so. But we haven't built anything since July.
And there's not any other stuff outstanding that they owe us for? From previous years?
Well, we have been up to date on a lot of those, maybe like I said, a couple of months out to last that I understood. And so they take care of whoever's in line when you get your paperwork. And like at some of the MAC meetings and stuff, that's what they'll tell you is a lot of people are owed a lot of money because they were late getting their information in or it's incomplete. So we were getting our complete information and getting reimbursed for it. So now it sounds like we're behind on that. And I think that's a pretty good chunk of money, so. I guess, do we need to talk to, is the sheriff still up here? Does he?
No.
Are we waiting on information from him or is it from the clerk or what do we need to?
Do you want me to see if Donell can come over?
How often do we submit that? Monthly?
It should be monthly.
So, I mean, shouldn't take more than, shouldn't be more than 30 days behind then, really. I mean, really. Get the information from the sheriff and you send it over.
I just shoot them an email or something, see if they'll come over and see where we're at on that, what, what the holdup is, whose information we need or who's not pushing the send button. I don't know, I just saw the, the email about the eight million, so that's a good chance for us to make that a chunk of change if, if we're owed, so. And I don't think that touches near what the state owes across the counties in Missouri, so. Shoot an email.
Will you shoot an email to Donell and the sheriff? I'll copy you guys.
Yeah, because that, that's.
Yeah, they're probably listening. I'm sure they are stuck to their radio listening to us right now. Interesting meetings. But all we need to know is what we need to do. If there's more money coming down the line.
Yeah, if we're 10 months, if we've got 10 months we haven't built, that's.
That's all I had, so.
Any new stuff out of the EOC or would you guys care to share?
No, we're actually down to one meeting a week and then also with the policy group, we're down to one call a week because, you know, it's, I, I got a couple of calls yesterday and I was glad that they, they clarified it, but I guess yesterday morning, there were, there were all kinds of cars lined up at, at CAP region's mobile testing. And so I had a call this morning from a gentleman who, and they're like, you're not giving us the right numbers. And I said, yeah, we are, but I guess they're starting up elective surgeries again and in order to do that, you have to have the, the COVID-19 test. So they're, anybody that sees a lot of traffic at the, the two testing stations, it's just for, we don't have a, a big spike or anything like that. It's people that are, that are going to have surgeries, so.
And they have to have it done by noon, like 48 hours before their surgery, so that's why in the mornings there's going to be a line.
Yeah, so it, it, yeah, that was, I.
Yeah.
People observe that, so it's, yeah, which is, so anyway, it's, it's nothing, it's not a big, big spike or anything. I don't, can you think of anything outside of EOC?
So do they have to stay home after they go have their test or?
That's what Jennifer said, that someone told her that they had to have their test and they were supposed to isolate until their surgery.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
And do they ask them that question when they come in?
I hope so. I asked Jennifer and Chesney yesterday to work on some guidance for just the county offices. I'll send the T-bays to send out, but just about like gloves and masks. I think there's a lot of confusion as to when, if, or, you know, how, how it's, how COVID can be spread on, you know, inanimate objects and things like that. So we're going to send some education out to county employees, but I'll send it to you.
When are we going to get antibodies testing? Do we know? I mean.
We've been, we've been asking and we have that on our wish list, of course. I think the problem is getting accurate, accurate testing and getting it available from the supplier, so that's definitely. We have like antibody testing and antigen testing. Those two different, and we like maybe consider doing the, the testing too, depending on if the hospital is willing to stop, so.
Yeah, you're doing a great job though.
I don't have anything else? Anything else?
Melody, can we order a face mask? And Melody, does she have the ability to order one?
Probably get them from EMS.
Do you want it for your staff? Are they not able to social distance?
Not six feet.
Are they screened every day?
I don't, we, I did purchase a thermometer, but I don't know that they could do that.
We'll send some stuff out about masks. I think there's that question from other organs as well.
So the masks basically protect yourself or do they protect others from you or?
Most of the masks just keep your germs in, but, you know, there's some concerns about, especially if people have underlying health conditions, about wearing the masks all day and the reduced oxygen and increased CO2 and it makes you touch your face more and it keeps bacteria that you're re-breathing. So I think there's a lot to talk about with having your, your people wear masks every day if they're not in contact, direct contact with the public and if the public has masks on. So Chesney and Jenna are working on some guidance for that. I think it, there's, it's a more complicated issue than just everyone should wear masks.
We, at the store, I, of course, I, I use shoe strings, believe it or not, but I, you just put it up when a customer comes in and then you take it off.
Right, but are you touching it with your hands when you?
I'm touching the air.
And then you touch them when you get their money?
The risk of getting it from an inanimate object is very, very low.
Shoe string doesn't cover much, though.
Anyway.
No, I mean, just, because you don't want to wear it all. You don't want to wear it all.
They said that a mask does more harm than good.
But some people look better with masks on.
Maybe. I think it's a situation. If you're in a hospital and you're working with, you know, people that are innovated and thick, you know, there's situations where the masks are definitely. you know, there's, there's situations where the masks are definitely required and good. But out in the public every day and, and people who have to wear them all day if they have other health effect, health concerns.
Yeah, I think each situation just almost has to be evaluated on its own. So like you said, there's a bunch of different situations where, yeah, you definitely want to have something. And they're probably changing masks quite often in those situations.
Well, and they have, you know, it's a sterile environment. We're not a, so you're, you know, you're at Walmart with your gloves and your mask on and you're touching your face and you're touching money and you're, you're not doing any, any good.
Yeah, we wash our cloth masks every day. So...
They're not magic gloves.
So I did finally find on the MAC, but this was back in 2019, the third quarter. We were owed 299,000 in payments. But that's not quite a year old. And that would probably cover almost till the last time we sent in a request. So that's a big chunk of change. All right.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Maybe we stay on recess till two o'clock?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
9:30.
Quick.
We don't play favorites though. We don't play favorites.
Yeah, I thought, I thought Debbie would be back. We could take care of it.
Are we up and running?
Yep.
Okay, we will call a meeting to order. It is Tuesday, uh, May 12th, 2020. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I already did that.
I know. That was a storm.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Last week, we got $9 million in, uh, for the coronavirus relief fund. We're still kind of trying to figure out what is, is covered and what is not. The CARE Act provides the payments from the funds may only be used to cover costs that are necessary expenditures due to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease 2019. Were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27th, uh, for the state or government. And were incurred during a period that begins on March 1st, 2020, ends on December 30th, 2020. So, uh, it, it is going to be, uh, it has to apply to COVID-19. And we just, we still kind of, uh...
We're still working our way through the process.
Yes.
There has been some frequently asked questions that were updated on May the 4th on the State Treasurer's website. I gave you guys a copy of that this morning to look over. Right now, we really need to come up with a process more than what we're going to spend it on. It's been suggested that maybe we do sort of like a grant application and award system where you guys would, um, make case by case determinations. And the possibility of breaking it up into multiple rounds of funding. So doing, for example, protection being like PPE, um, prevention. So items put in place to prevent the spread and then maybe a recovery portion. Like you said earlier, there's still a lot of questions regarding how and what these funds can be spent on. I think it's pretty clear when it comes to PPE and things like that, yes, that would be included. I think there's some gray areas in other areas of it. And we definitely would have to have some sort of written agreement if we were to give this money to anyone else besides the county.
Yeah, hopefully we will get more clarification. I think, I think we need to come up with a, a form or something that, that is submitted, so that we kind of know, we can't have EMS just, you know, going out and purchasing PPE.
Yes. Yes.
We need, we need to, to really track it and account for it since the county is responsible and I signed for it. I don't want to go to Lev anymore. So, uh, I'm gonna send Kristin instead.
So ultimately, the county is responsible and liable for all of the expenditures and making sure that it's approved and spent appropriately. This is and could be a full-time job for someone. I think at this point, we do not have the staff to do this. We have set up the fund. We will help with any of the financial aspects as far as running through our system. But as far as running this grant, we're a two-person office that is spread pretty thin at the moment. So my recommendation from the get-go would be to either hire a consultant to help us manage this or hire an employee to manage this for us.
Do we have a consultant in mind or?
Um, I have briefly talked with Williams Keeper since they're here doing our audit.
Right.
They do have a team that's working on the CARES Act itself. So we could reach out and see if that's something they would help us with. I do know there's some other resources available. I did sit through a NACO webinar. And there was some information on consultants and contractors that do this for a living and things to look for if you're looking for someone.
I guess that would be my preference is to find someone that could do it versus hiring someone. I don't know if we need to bid that or if that would be a professional service or?
I think that would be a professional service. Jill, am I correct? I mean?
Arguably, yes.
I mean, you could do an RFQ if you wanted to request qualifications.
And that's where I would be, maybe find two or three and just get an RFQ for them and see what, what they could provide for us and what kind of a cost. Whether that was hourly or monthly or whatever.
Yeah, I had brought up Mark Ruther at the Treasurers, but there seems to be some complications there. But I thought, well, he's, he is a CPA and, uh, you know, the treasurer is, yeah, controlling our money. But, uh, so that, that was next. So...
I think that the county internally also needs some guidance because there are multiple sources of funding at the moment. Some being CARES funding, some being public assistance. We need some guidance on if there's particular expenses that you want to go here versus public assistance versus, you know, I know the clerk's office got a grant. I know that the sheriff's working on an additional grant through JAG. So there's multiple funding sources at the moment. We kind of need to determine the things we've spent already and which funding source because we can't double dip on anything. So what you submit to one, you cannot submit to another.
Sounds like that would be just a question, part of the grant application. Have you, have you requested funding from other sources?
It is. I think definitely from everyone outside. But we also need to determine on the things we've already spent, which funding source we want to submit the reimbursement from. Because there have been, um, quite a few expenses on our side already that we have already paid for.
I saw that Jackson County is using that for the safety partitions.
So that's something else. I, I do have multiple offices, some that have already put in windows, others that are asking for some like plexiglass and things like that to be put in their office.
So can that be an internal process, similar to the grant processes? Are you wanting reimbursed for this, uh, from county? I mean, I think it should function the same because, um, just in my view, I mean, have we, have we paid for this? Is this something that you want reimbursed out of your office expense or, or whatever? And what makes it COVID-related? I mean, just a series of questions that doesn't have to be too complicated.
So some of that, we created those emergency lines earlier. There's one in the sheriff, one in EMS and one in general fund that we have been trying to track those COVID-related expenses in those lines currently. The initial, before we knew about the CARES money that we received, they were all being submitted through public assistance. That was the route we were going because that was the funding source that we knew at the time. At this point, we can still pull those back if we need to. But we need to go through that list of expenditures and decide. There is some timeframe, frame differences. So, um, public assistance, you can go back to January the 20th with expenses. The coronavirus relief fund, you can only go back to March 1st with expenses. So I think that our only option with any expense between January 20th and March the 1st would be through public assistance. Anything from March 1st forward, we have the option to go either way.
Carrie, has the city done anything at City Hall or like that? You know, okay.
As far as like partitions between the public, are you talking about improvements?
Yeah, that you have done because of COVID-19, you're trying to separate the public from your employees. I was talking to Doug Reese today in St. Martin's too. And they're limiting their meetings to 15 people. And they have some other stuff they might want to be doing too.
Some that we would plan to make too that could possibly be incorporated into this.
Kind of, it is money that our municipalities and, and Cole County can use. So Doug had called me about something else, but I was talking to him about that too. So...
So all the stuff previously already submitted, I mean, do we have a list of that?
I can run your reports of everything that's come out of there. I think the bulk of the expense at the moment is through EMS.
Right.
Last I checked, we were around $50,000, $60,000.
And has some of this already been filed with CIMA and FEMA or?
Um, so Sierra's been working on that. We've kind of been compiling the information, but nothing's been approved or anything through them, correct?
No, and I told them that was, you know, a faulty, so they have to do this.
Right.
And that six, so far, won't be paid out and not, but it's still...
Correct.
So how do we, how do we develop some type of a grant process? I look at, I mean, I like the three categories or four categories or five categories, whatever it is, and break them down into categories. Education, did one of those fall into that or? And if there's other categories that you didn't touch on, I mean?
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to suggestions.
I wonder, Missouri Association of Counties has anything that they've worked on or?
Um, they have.
If some of our other counties have already created a farm, maybe we can borrow it from another county.
I was gonna say, I kind of went out and searched that what I could last week to see if any of them had an application already formed, like on their website or something. I have not seen anything yet.
So they're, they're just as confused as we are.
I, I think that every county at the moment is kind of in the same boat. We're all trying to figure out for sure what we can and cannot spend it on and what that process looks like. And just like everything else with counties, I think they'll all take a different approach to it. So...
So really, I mean, we're stuck with one category for right now until we have, or maybe two or, like, protection? I mean?
I mean, you...
I feel like protection falls COVID-related protection expenses such as PPE and other items. We could move forward with some of that. And then maybe, maybe Kristi could work on some of the education piece.
Yeah, we had that under our prevention, our prevention category.
I mean, so...
So, yeah, we, we kind of thought protection would be the PPE and equipment needed to protect our people. Prevention would be like your screens and things so that we can open back up and work with the public and other things that...
And that will cover testing if we, if we start testing.
So I think that would probably be a category. You'd want to do a treatment one. So if you hear anybody testing, like, to, you know, treat the patients, communications, things like that.
And response.
So it'd be basically a response.
Well, no, I think you do protection, response and, uh, education.
Yeah, because I...
Yeah, but I think response needs to be, you know, a separate animal.
So protection, prevention, response, education.
Those are pretty good start. But I think you, you know, I think number one, as far as getting someone that knows about grants to be able to put some of this together. I happen to know this girl that works for the emergency management and she does really good at grant stuff. And we just heard, I'm not gonna get your name, but, uh, she might be a good avenue to go to when you talk about grant stuff. And then, uh, the other thing is, I think we, I think we've talked about it and her and I have, and I've talked to some other entities about putting together some committees to be able to look at some of these, the PPE versus response. So that, you know, with the Chiefs Association, LABC, we can put together some people to start coming up with what their ideas are. Because we don't even know, for instance, fire protection districts, um, if they've encumbered any money for this COVID, you know, we just don't realize that. I think if we try to put together committees to be able to gather this information, it would be better.
It has into here too, that maintaining state prisons and county jails is also, um...
I think it qualifies. I can add, we're talking about the protection part.
I think we've been doing a really good job of working together and, and trying to buy together some of the PPE and things. If we can continue that process as well. So if there's things that we can buy together and spend those funds together so that we have all that documentation together would be helpful as well.
Yeah, it says expenditures must be reasonably necessary. So there goes my Porsche.
Good, aren't you right?
No.
I'm just saying, Kristin, don't be, don't be close-minded.
They recommend establishing a process in the nature of a grant application and award system in order to permit entities to request a portion of the funds. So, um, that's what MAC had sent out. So, and I think that, I like that idea.
I don't think it would be too terrible of an idea to piggyback off how our stuff works when it comes to federal trickle down the state, state to some, or some awards, that we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. And it's basically the exact same thing. Money's... Money's coming from the county and being dispersed after those grant continues.
As long as that pass-through is documented and certifications made, that they're spending that money correctly as well.
Because we're on the hook for it, not them.
Yes, yes.
Kind of, sort of, yes.
Yeah, if they sign, I mean.
No.
Right, right.
They signed a document saying if they spend the money inappropriately or.
Not acceptable.
Well, you could split it in the application, like certified assurances for our federal pastor grant that we have to agree to. And then when we sign the actual grant document, it repeats all that. And then you sign it, certify that you're in compliance.
Yeah, but then we have to guarantee that their use falls under a certified COVID expense. And we have to make sure that they use that money to pay for it. And so they have to submit an invoice and guarantee that that's what the money went for. So not just somebody saying, yeah, I might use it for this. It's the whole paperwork trail from ordering to receiving to expending to.
So we could structure it to be reimbursement only, to where they have to spend the funds before they can get reimbursed for those funds.
Or have an agreement in place that, you know, this is what we want to buy, and that's the whole grant process, is that what we want to do.
And it's the major documents.
Reimbursable once those things are purchased.
I like the idea of having to expend the money before we say yea or nay. Because you're saying that you're gonna spend it on this related.
Right.
Item or.
I don't mind, yeah. I don't mind saying yea or nay, or having an agreement upfront. But now you need to purchase it, you need to expend it, you need to turn in a receipt, and then we'll reimburse. And we talked about that the last time. I mean, that's like, we're guaranteeing the funding. So, you know, gives you the ability to go out and purchase it. I think we need to start small, and if we can do the protection and the education, if there's something else that maybe we can learn from some of these smaller ones as we go. And so then we can build out the others until we get more direction.
Yeah, I want to be very careful on how we spend it and what we give out until we really know. Because ultimately, the county is responsible for it. If it's disallowed, then we're kind of out the money. We have to pay the state back. And so we need to be very, very careful on how we expend the money.
So I think the first step in the process is we need to develop that application process.
Steve or Carrie, do you have anything you want to add or?
Well, I certainly think that it's a good idea to have the consultant, and they may have some thoughts on process. It also seems to me that there's some expenditures that have already occurred. And I know in our case, those are kind of the things that you mentioned. You know, there's some masks and personal protection equipment, shields like we did for our buses. So some of those expenditures have already been made. Maybe those could be done a little bit quicker. And then it also seems to me like there's some projects that may be coming that may fit in some of those categories differently, but nonetheless, they're projects or items that haven't occurred yet and may be covered. It seems to me like if you have an application process, you kind of need to know what those categories are. So you're applying for the right thing, and otherwise, you know, we've got a lot of projects that we could certainly submit, but for future projects. But I don't know, you know, which ones may be the kinds of things that you're thinking about. I'd also note, and I don't know how it came through on the language, but I know that there's some cities that are providing, using the CARES grant money for businesses, for grants to businesses, and then also for utility payments for people and entities that have not been able to make utility payments. So I'm not sure how they're, what rationale they're using for those kinds of expenditures that there are some.
I think that's currently the gray area we're talking about. It's not real clear exactly what those uses are and up to interpretation. We just don't want to make the wrong interpretation at this point.
I would say that if there is a way to get some kind of, at least a consensus, you know, approval, but a consensus, so the cities have some idea, you know, that whatever they're thinking about is something that at least you all would agree to as well, then we don't need to worry about arguing about it later on, like after it's all been expended and done. And it's a short timeframe, so I know with some of our purchasing procedures, you know, that's kind of a long lead in some cases for some of those future kinds of projects.
I've been talking to Judge Joyce about the opening of the courthouse. And I know she's got some ideas on safety things she wants to do. When is your municipal court going to open again, do you know?
Well, we were planning on, I think it's May 27th, but with some of those comments from the judge, you know, we may be complying with whatever that direction is. And since municipal court really is a function of the county court, of course, you know, that we would hope that if there are some needs for personal protection kind of equipment or even mask, for example, for people that are coming in, that those would be provided by somebody other than the city, whoever's making the order, that those are needed, which seems to be coming from the county. So there's a lot of stuff out there. I mean, a lot of little things.
Yeah.
But those in United, all the other cities and counties, that adds up pretty quick. And then there's certainly a lot of things. And then there's also some projects that I think, you know, probably not here, it's not the place to talk about it, but that may be a future kind of project that serves the county and all the cities as well.
And Steve, you might have touched on too, the fact that I think having a grant process is good, and then there may be an opportunity that we may want to have a discussion, you know, where we can talk about some of those big picture things as well.
Yeah, we just need to know, paying somebody's utilities, I'd, that's going to be somewhere down the road if that's allowed even. I, yeah.
Well, and then that would come into play too. I mean, if that business had applied for CARES funding and got CARES funding to cover rent and utilities and payroll, you know, that would be, they'd be disqualified from applying for this. And so are we gonna know if that business took advantage of other CARES funding? And I mean, I think that gets in a pretty complicated process. And a lot of people would probably sign their life away and say they didn't use it or didn't get it or whatever, and just try to get extra money.
Yeah, I think at first, I think we would just look at things that really do apply to COVID-19 and our government units before we start.
Can we get some clarification on payroll expenses? Like if staff are already, you know, employed by the county, but they're directed to work on COVID expenses? And then like as it stands now, our nurses that were on call for the weekends, they don't get any compensation except for those hours they were actually worked. Can we compensate them for being on call? So I think we have, we have been tracking our hours, but we did not, and we know who was on call for the weekends, but, you know, that our staff that are on call 24/7 don't get any compensation for that.
So I think the guidance that we've seen so far is that if we budgeted someone for public health and they're still working on public health yet, it's something slightly different from what they were there, they were already included in our budget. So would it be any additional expense, so like their overtime and things like that would be covered?
Number three here says payroll expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency.
Right, and Kristin said, but we already are budgeted.
Yeah, and I don't know.
So if.
That would be in addition to what's already budgeted.
Right. And I think if you took someone from my department and put them in the health department to help you during this time, you could say my duties were substantially different than what they were budgeted for. In that circumstance, you could take my salary and say, hey, this was substantially different than what it was intended for, because I'm not normally a public health person. So I think you have to look at the bigger picture there.
And then I know that some departments are doing like hazard pay for the employees. They're also compensating for being on call.
So I think that what we've seen there as far as guidance is that you had to have a policy in place for that hazard pay or whatever prior to. So since we did not have a personnel policy in place prior to that said, in case of an emergency, we would pay hazard pay for this or that, it's hard to go backwards now because the policy wasn't there before.
And then another thing that we really want to explore, which is probably more in the response category, is a contact tracing software. Right now, we do it all via Excel spreadsheet, but they have some new software that some of the other counties are exploring, that help with contact tracing and tracking. So we want to explore that. I don't know how much of that is, like, our staff going into it.
So I guess that's kind of the question, the immediate needs such as putting up that Plexi in certain offices so they can open back up to the public or things that have already been spent. What do you want us to do in the interim with those things until we get the application process in place? And it sounds like the city has some of those types of expenditures as well.
Hurry up and wait. In all reality, I mean, if we need to do some of this stuff for doing the tracking that Christie recommends, we need to decide if we want to do that right now because it doesn't look like it's going away anytime soon. So we need to decide if we're gonna do that totally, totally separate of whether we're getting money back for it. So I think those kind of decisions just need to be made apart from this grant. And then if you're gonna make the expenditure, then you can always figure out where you're gonna try to get it reimbursed at, if it's gonna get reimbursed. So if that makes sense.
So the additional hours that the health department employees worked beyond what would be considered normal salary, those are just lost or?
Well, so if they're a non-exempt employee and are working overtime that wasn't budgeted, which they don't have any overtime in their budget anyway, those hours would be covered.
But so what would be considered, I guess, what's considered a salaried amount of hours?
Well, it doesn't, how it, whether you're exempt or non-exempt. Exempt means you don't get overtime. Non-exempt means you do. And the law relates to what kind of duties you have. For instance, I'm exempt, and Matt's exempt, and David, that level. And so what you would do is just any, for non-exempt, anything over 40 hours, you would figure out what their per hour salary is, and then they'd get time and a half.
Correct.
Which is what your people's job is.
Right. My only issue is, it specifically says no bonuses. And if you were giving compensation to those individuals and they worked those weekends, right? If you were giving them a day off during the next week or something, you didn't.
We let them get comp time, but they did it only if they incurred hours. Like they didn't get any compensation for being on call.
Oh, okay.
And I think you have to pay them overtime and not comp time.
Well, we already let them use the comp time because they had daycare issues and other, you know.
And that's their choice.
I know, but I would have rathered them get the additional thing. Right, it wasn't.
I mean, I was just trying to clarify, I mean.
We tried really hard to let them.
Salaried employee, we don't expect them to work 80 hours a week. I mean, I don't think that's fair.
Yeah.
So, I mean, most of them are gonna work around 40, maybe 45. You know, might be a week where they're 50, but obviously 80 is excessive. And so, you know, they did it because they had to, but they should be compensated for that somehow.
Well, the health department, they only exempt employees from Kristy and Donna. So anybody else over there who works over 40 hours.
Yeah, they gave, they gave, we gave them time and a half if it was 40. You know, if it was 40, that we got to have some for comp time, so. And they used some of it, some of it they haven't used.
That's reimbursable.
Comp time, yes.
So we need to find somebody to oversee the program. We need to come up with an application. And then we need to get more clarification so we can actually start buying equipment if it's needed for COVID-19.
So if somebody's already expended something that they feel like is COVID-19 related, I mean, is that something that we can take a look at and just approve as reimbursable?
I think so, yes.
So just a short form or maybe a receipt with something that just says, hey, we've already expended these masks or whatever that may be for COVID-related activities. We'd like to get reimbursed for this.
I think as long as they're, are you talking internally or externally as well?
I mean, I'd say both.
Okay. So I think as long as that assurance is in place that they're not submitting that to be reimbursed through any other federal funding, and that it was something that was not in their budget prior to. So as long as we have those assurances in place, I think that, yes, that is.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a fairly short question answer. You haven't turned this in elsewhere.
So do you want to say like prior to today? So that things going forward, we go through some sort of application process? So anything expended prior to today, they could go ahead and.
Submit.
Submit receipts and things like that to try and get reimbursement, and we'll review those?
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as we can get some type of service onboard so that we can start compiling all this stuff. That's just my opinion. I don't think that expenses are, you know, other than expenses that we've already expended through EMS, you know, like some of these others are gonna be too much, but I don't know. Obviously, we can take a look at them. If we have questions or something, we can send them back and try to get clarification.
Okay. So do you want Jessica to work on RFQ for a consultant?
Yeah.
No. Send her the better.
Okay. She doesn't work for me.
I know.
Okay. Are there expenses that you guys have at the moment? Like Kristy mentioned, the software, something that we need to approve right away to move forward in the process at the moment?
We don't, yeah, we don't, they're just letting it.
Okay.
I don't even know how much it costs.
Okay, so.
We're presently working on the antibodies and, you know, those different tests and test kits and things like that, which have a big mass of, you know, the utilization of hospitals and the bus. So those things are kind of on the horizon.
Okay.
So those are gonna make you, you're gonna get kind of that approval to push forward with those and bring it forward, or how are we gonna do that in part days, as I was mentioning, those under emergency procurement processes or the other product. We just need guidance on that more than anything.
Carrie or Steve?
Is there a way that we could develop like maybe a Google Doc sheet or something that, you know, we could all share or something and just kind of make notes on it or something just to, um, or if you're gonna prepare something, but I, I mean, well, I was just thinking some type of a brainstorming document that we could, um, try to start checking stuff off or just putting stuff in there. I mean, sometimes you start bouncing ideas off people and if you can see it all, maybe you can add something. So I don't know, I'm just calling out ideas.
Well, so one of the other suggestions through the NACO presentation was, um, I wanna get the right wording for what they called it. So we could go out with issuing a notice of funding opportunity to give people the timeframe to come up with those ideas and submit them so we could kind of create that running list from other communities and internally. So maybe we could prioritize what some of those immediate needs were.
All right. I was just thinking if we had categories and a lot of times somebody comes up with an idea and well, now all of a sudden I, I think of three or four or five other things and so I could just jot them down there now, you know, now we create a list for education, for protection, for resources or whatever. And so sometimes those things help other people think of other things that maybe might qualify. And then we can, you know, some things we can kick out and other things we can add and, um, but it just seems like it's a, we gotta start somewhere.
So one of the things that I saw was this couple places that are doing like your PPE-related type thing, your treatments, your testing, things like that. Or even here now, they're doing that, um, we're more on an ad hoc, as needed, bring it up. You know, and the other ones were like a thirty, sixty, and ninety day notice for funding opportunity type stuff. And right, everybody submitted their stuff and then went through the approval process. But, you know, the two places where they've been there, one was specifically that reimbursement, right? If you felt, felt it was important enough that you had to do it, if basically you're sure, I don't know what's term, that it was COVID-related, right? Because if you weren't going to do it without the funding, then it wasn't truly COVID-related or not, right? So that was one way that they looked at it. The other place was doing that, um, it was grant approval first and then the funds could be expended. So those were the two avenues that they were placing for now. One was you had to purchase first, now basically prove that you felt this, you were willing to roll the dice, basically, I guess, was the way that they'd worded it to me. And then the other one was that, I do think that if you have, because there are going to be things that are gonna pop up in a month that we're not thinking of or something could happen that we're gonna have to come and go, hey, I needed the no bonuses for this timeframe. Or we need to look at this now. And so having that ad hoc ability, this like, to keep on radar.
I think that's why you're getting, uh, you're doing RFQ though. I, I think, we, I don't wanna get too far ahead here because I think that you're, the person that you're gonna be bringing into prominence is gonna have those ideas. They're gonna take those notes, they're gonna be able to push those out there, buddy. I like your idea, Chris, because I know we have some expenditures out there, I know he does, I'm gonna get a lot. I know the city does. So if we can get out there and those initial ones that we've had since January one and can push those out and get reimbursed for those immediately.
Not January one, March one.
March one, oh, March one then, then, um, then we can go ahead and move forward with that money, get that paid off. But then you, you get your person online, you can even nominate, get those committees going that I was talking about and coming up with ideas. And then those, those committees can come in and do presentations and everybody can look at what's going on. But, yeah, I don't wanna get, you get too busy with this and you're gonna get lost.
It'll take us a year.
Yeah, so. Well, it has to be, yeah, it has to be spent a year, it's being covered by December. So I think first thing is your RFQ, that's a, that's a good idea. We need to get that person onboard because they may come in and go, hey, Arden, you guys talked about stupid. This is how we need to do it, these are the tiers we need to do and do it right, we need to do it this way. They won't say stupid names, but I'll be all right though. But the, if we can move forward with that person first and then in the meanwhile, like Chris said, and, and those expenditures that we've had since March one, we can relieve and help our, the other entities around here by allowing to reimburse some of those funds.
And the, the consultant fees aren't eligible expenses for this? So the person we're bringing in to do this consulting can be covered by the funding itself?
And will the, I mean, part of the RFQ, will the consultant have the experience there to be able to guide us on what would be allowed and what not? Or are they just gonna more or less manage, um, the, uh, all the documentation and kind of manage the fund? Or we're looking for both?
I think both at the moment. I mean, the recommendation from NACO was you wanted someone well qualified with at least ten years of experience dealing with federal funding. So, I mean, I think.
Does Williams Cooper have that?
Probably.
If we're using them now, I mean, I understand when we go out to RFQ, but if we're using them now, we need to move now. So I, I, just my two cents worth. But I don't, I, I would rather not wait another month for us to be able to go out to RFQ.
Well, RFQ is, I mean, that can happen pretty quick, yeah, so.
Because you don't have the same publishing.
Right.
Deadlines.
That you do for RFQ.
I mean, I think it's a matter of making a few calls and getting a proposal sent over and we can, we can move forward.
So that's our first priority, um.
There is people still to continue that PPE, it's been nine, we're not putting a deadline like today, you know, thirteen months, that's a different process for PPE. It is still, the supply chains are tightening, they're not getting better. Because as people open up, now you have entities that were not open, dental offices being an example. Now, every dentist, you know, dental office, America is trying to find a PPE. And so it's actually more constrained, not easier to find PPE. So to wait to obtain those items is not smart and is actually probably gonna put us in a bind at some point. Because stuff we've ordered in March, we had two boxes show up today. And, you know, have that order, doesn't ship for another ten days.
I don't think they're saying though, if we're stopping to do, we're doing business. I think they're just wanting to reimburse from March first till today to get that quick reimbursement monies out there. And we can continue to while we've been doing, on your agency purchasing online, I mean, we can continue to do that. And we just hold that money though until the RFQ gets through. Is that, is that what you thought too, Chris, or is that our jet or?
I guess, I guess the downfall of saying like, hey, go buy whatever you want and I'm still gonna, like, I thought the deadline of today would get you those quick funds for already expended. And then.
And then we have to go through the process.
Right. I, I think there can be an exception for PPE if that's something we feel is an emergency and has to be ordered.
I think your, your testing supplies and your antibody stuff, right? Because A, I can get those, at least we're working with ones that we already have a contract with. So it's not something that we would then have to go back out of, already have a contract for medical supplies, but we'll do that by. So we have that in place. And so it would just be approval for expenditure versus have to go out and pay. And then the PPE process, we're working with, um, uh, seeing if we've got one on cooperative. Because we have, we have found a solution at least that works for EMS that at least gets us to our RPE crunch from a masking point. It's no longer present. So for us, those are our priorities that we still have to be able to, to do quickly and not go through a thirty-sixty eight process. Because in thirty and sixty days, if you have a spike, if the supply chains continue to contract, um, or crunch, you know, availability, that's going to be an issue.
Steve, a question or comment?
Yes.
Contact tracing software specifically says we can use the funds for contact tracing to look for it. Decide we want that contact tracing software, we need it quickly because if we have a spike, it's gonna help us track our cases faster.
So I think there's things for the respond and the protection sides that are immediate. And I think there are some of those other things that can go through whatever process you can determine. But there are some things that I would at least advocate that we need, we don't need to put too great of a window or a process on.
So PPA, can you order enough to get us through till the end of the year? I mean, is that a?
So it depends, right? So one of the things that we're working on, um, is called Clean Spaces. It's a system that would work very well for at least EMS. Uh, we invited all the other agencies to come fly along yesterday and did a presentation, they came up and did all of that. And it hasn't been the actual sales route, but they were hands-on with them. I don't know if it works for them, that's their agency, they're welcome to, you know, go through whatever process or what they want to do. For EMS, it works really well. Um, and so what that does is their filters are not in short supply. So we can get those and I can, I have the ability to get enough filters to where then I can meet that need through the rest of the year, at least from a respiratory protection side, from a protective suit side, things like that. Those are still very tight and the mask are even tighter. So again, that's why we're more so shifting towards that route. It's because it's something that is reusable, sustainable, and I can get through the supply chain now.
Steve, to, to Matt's point, I know he talked about it at one of your prior meetings, but, you know, a little bit of that is if the county's gonna be providing some of that equipment for the cities, Jefferson City in our case, great, that's good to know. But if not, we also need to know that because then we're gonna have to go out and do, you know, the same thing for, you know, that same kind of equipment. So some coordination there. And I just want to mention, I know that there are some counties that, um, are allocating some of that money by, by population. And, and we do appreciate being able to be involved in the conversation with the cities.
I think that's why earlier, we need to continue to work together. If there's things that we can order together and use, that's great. But like Matt said, maybe what works for him doesn't work for law enforcement. So maybe we need to group law enforcement together to order something that works for all of them, something that works for medical. Maybe that's something different that works for fire, I don't know. But I think we all need to sit down together and figure out if there's those items that we can purchase together.
December sounded like a long way off.
It's not.
No.
It's not. So maybe at this point, besides going out for the RFQ, we need to have some working sessions with maybe someone from fire and someone from EMS, someone from law enforcement, you know, working together to see what those immediate needs are.
Those must be done via emails, though, can't, I mean, you don't have to sit in a meeting, do you? You can write down on this what you're needing. And y'all know kind of mask you like to use, you know, kind you like to use.
We are, JCPD and I have already been talking on this stuff, so, I mean, we got a pretty good idea right now, but.
That's outside of this money, though. I mean, this money, we just gotta get a process figured out. I think we're getting down into weeds too far here. And I think if you need something, you need to go, you need to buy it. If we need to do something to mitigate, if there's a spike and be able to handle it, we gotta get it. We gotta take care of getting that and not worry about this money and who gets what out of that. This is gonna be a whole different process. And that's what we gotta get. If we're gonna do, write a grant application for it, there are, I've seen millions of grant applications out there. That we could probably get something through emergency services and we're applying for them right now. We can go off of it and make it as easy and simple or make it as hard as we want to. And we know what we have to have to prove that you had the expenditure for those items and what kind of, uh, records we're gonna have to have on hand and go from there. So I think we just needn't worry about the process at this point. So if we get the RFP out.
RFQ?
RFQ, sorry.
And then you want that person to write the application?
That depends. We've got, we've got all kinds of applications that we apply for grants that we can template off of. And I think it just needs to be relatively simple. I think my biggest part of it's gonna be the record keeping and the maintenance of all that stuff, so.
I don't know if Williams Cooper's gonna have technical experts in the different aspects. They're not gonna know what blocks, their job, their auditor, CPAs.
They're gonna be a record keeper, right?
Yeah, those are the guys that's gonna have to approve it. Once they prove it, all the ones that those is gonna check.
So you gotta be nice to them.
I mean, for us, there's, well, I use them.
I'm just teasing you about being nice, you're always nice, except for when you are.
But, yeah, so I'm not as worried about the technical aspect as I am about getting somebody in place and moving forward.
I mean, it's just, the grant application, there's no brainer stuff, so I just, I think keep it simple. And PPE, obviously, is something that's simple. So you don't have to have seventy-two lines of an application that you gotta write out. I mean, it's not a high school application and I want you to tell me about your experiences.
You still want a drop of blood?
Yep, DNA, so. And it may have to be a, a living, breathing document too that we may have to change as we go. I mean, you get to application, you need more information. Or if it's one of those gray areas, you ask more questions at that point, so.
And there could be more than one consultant too. I mean, Williams Cooper could take care of all the paperwork and making sure everything's good. And then we could maybe have a, another consultant that we kind of run stuff by and make sure that's allowable expense. You know, if they have some expertise in that. I know Lincoln has some of that with the RPC, but, you know, they, uh, so, and not everybody will have everything that we're gonna need, so.
Did we do anything today? Any accomplishments here?
Well, we're, we're getting closer to creating, yeah.
Okay.
Somebody to oversee it, we're getting closer.
I think this is gonna take multiple meetings, it's a multiple.
An application.
I feel like we did something today, I'm like, we accomplished.
So you need to approve it, and you hear if you're allowed to today, per tracing software, contact tracing software, over the roof, it's perfect.
Well, we can put that on Tuesday's agenda or next week's regular agenda, right?
If that gives you enough time to research it.
Once you have some time to get the.
Well, if you're taking some middles, can we submit something?
Sure.
Actually, that's not a submittal, that's just accounting expenditure before the reimbursement thing. So it's, I mean, uh, we've got some other things that were mentioned like, uh, hands-free towel dispensers and stuff like that. I mean, we need to consider that, this is gonna be around for a while. I mean, I'm old, so I just wash my hands, grab the towels and then use it to open the door and, you know, we'll get it figured out.
Um, I did wanna mention that we, for contact tracing, we did not plan to ask for any additional staff. And other recommendation from, I think, HO or CDC is thirty contact tracers per one hundred thousand of population. So like Jackson County plans to ask for thirty-eight contact tracing staff plus data entry plus, I forget all. But they're gonna ask their, they put fifty-two people into their submission along with fifty-two phones and fifty-two laptops, everything for like fourteen hundred, forty hours. But, um, without knowing what our cases are, we don't plan to do that. We just plan to train basically everybody in the health department to be able to step in and help members needed. And then EMS also volunteers their staff to retrain, um, to do contact tracing and even that we need more staff. And JCPD actually volunteered their staff to do that as well. So if we needed to stand up, we could easily provide some quick, just-in-time training and have staff help with that as long as they understand the forms and understand if, uh, we don't plan to hire additional staff, uh, for that short time period. Because I'm not sure what they plan to do with them after December when, when the funding is not available.
Right.
And then fifty-two phones, fifty-two laptops. It was, it was a lot of expenditures. I asked a few other counties just to see what they have planned to spend it on. And that's what Jackson County plans to do, is hire a lot of people.
Steve, did you guys have something that was immediate that you were thinking that you?
It's on your definition of immediate.
Contact tracing software or PPE, something, I mean, that you need funding immediately?
Could be, depends on, you know, who's gonna be taking care of all the masks and all that, that kind of stuff.
So if, if they go with what we're going with, we'll. So if, if they go with what we're going with, we'll continue that process. If it's something that they're not going to do the same as us, then it will be each agency's responsibility to manage their PPE. We're not going to manage six different types from six different entities. That is, I don't have staff at the time. I don't know what your burn rate is versus our burn rate. You use it, and it's not something that's a collective use. There's, it's on the United States.
So you're not going to, once you get your new, this new gizmo, then you're not going to do the N95 anymore?
We'll have N95s, right? But we give something different for you outside of, you know, if you want XYZ N95, they want XYZ N95 or something else, or whatever they are. I'm not going to manage four different things. It's, I'll have standard N95s because we have to have those.
Right.
And to have, like for us, the clean spaces. Like if it goes outside of that, that's their agency's responsibility to manage and contain that because I don't, they're not mine versus.
And as the current burn rate, we can probably do the other entities for what, 60 days of our current burn rate?
We went to a different process.
Right.
Add with the supply chain.
I think before we authorize any purchases for non-Cole County agencies, there needs to be some sort of form or agreement in place where they certify that these, this is going to be purchased and used in compliance with the requirement. And if it's not, the entity will indemnify Cole County or any kind of expenses so we don't get burned on having to pay back something if a non-county agency doesn't expend the funds.
Correctly.
According to the act.
Even a request. I mean, obviously, I just, just kind of thinking about municipal court. If you're going to be giving masks to people at municipal court or our courts or whatever, but I mean, there almost should be a documentation that these masks are for court-related purposes and just to document that. I mean, versus just, hey, we need, need 2,000 masks. Well, what do we need 2,000 masks for? I mean, so this, this for.
Well, Judge Joyce is going to require anybody in the courthouse to have a mask on. So she's hoping that people will have their own mask and they'll bring them, but I.
Yeah, what type of mask? Just like a cloth mask or?
I don't think she can prohibit people from coming in because the courthouse, you have to be careful because people are entitled to due process. So.
I actually have a letter that she sent out that is supposed to be going out. Do you, would you like me to read the press release?
Yes, yes.
Phase one, if we do not have repeat, the pandemic repeats itself. Phase one of reopening the courthouse would start on June the first. We'll be limited some number of visitors to the courthouse at one time. No more than 10 persons would be in any courtroom or halls. All areas of the courthouse have been marked off by six feet to achieve social distancing. In order to achieve the capacity limits, priority has been given to felonies, juvenile cases, orders of protection, so. Everyone coming into the courthouse will be screening for COVID-19 symptoms. Temperature will be taken. Contact information will be gathered. Family members and friends will not be able to enter the courthouse unless prior approval with the litigant, unless prior approval is obtained. Every person will be required to wear a mask except while testifying, and they should bring their own masks. Enhanced cleanings of the courthouse will continue. That was put out at noon.
So will we turn them away if they come to the courthouse without a mask?
So this has nothing to do with us.
No, I know, I know.
We go back to talking about that and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I was.
If we're going to do RFQ, kind of forgot the process. I mean, I don't, you can ask for money. I mean, let us know you're going to be asking for it. But I don't know how you're asking for it, and we're not even going to be able to ask for it from ourselves apparently at this time. So if you're going to buy it, buy it. We need to do it to mitigate any kind of spike or peak or whatever. And then we're going to do it anyway. We've got money in reserve. We've, you know, been good with our money. So we've got money to cover this stuff regardless of this eight or nine million dollars. So I think we just need to work on the process at this point and get that step done first. And as far as the application, I nominate you to help write it, Sam. So, or like Chris said, you can have a document that we can all comment on. I mean, I think this is something that should be down to emergency services, right down your alley. So that can be a good starting point. And she's probably going to pull her hair out and we'll find out if she wants to stay here after all this part, but. So that's just where I'm at. Let's get this process going.
So you want Kristen to go ahead and push on finding a consultant?
Mm-hmm.
You guys want to vote on that?
So the, the purchasing agent to do the RFQ, right?
Right. Yes.
Kristen.
Correct.
All right, trying to help you out here. So, yeah.
So you want to make a motion?
So I move that we ask Jessica to get the RFQ started for, for the CAREERS Act.
Consultant.
Consultant.
I second it. That's what I was thinking. How we needed to word it.
Right.
Yeah.
She knows what we're looking for, so. Good, doesn't she?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, okay. And maybe we can start working on an application.
Yeah, I'd say if you can kind of draw something up and it can be as rough or fine-tuned as you want to make it to start with, I'm sure it's going to get changed up here because it's, it can be as objective or subjective as we want it to be, too. One person may feel something is related, and one person may feel you don't want your money going towards that, which is right, so.
I think we need to work on the, the easy ones first, protection and education, and then the other ones can come later.
Then we'll have, hopefully clarification later.
Do you want to do anything with any expenses that have already been incurred?
I honestly don't. I want to wait until we get some kind of application and process set up.
They can be submitted, but I mean, we.
Yeah, I want to wait until we get the consultant.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't have anything for them to submit.
No, no, no.
I mean, just I'd keep, just like you were going to request it anywhere else. We don't know what other things coming down.
Request for reimbursement.
So right now, the internal process for the departments, if they have an expense that's COVID-related, is no different. They're going to come and ask either for an emergency purchase or to bid or whatever to you guys.
Transfer or whatever that is, so.
Now, we assume it'd be the same for y'all. If you need something down at the city, you're not going to wait to find out if this is coming before you, you go and get it if you need it tomorrow. Because obviously, we don't have this ready.
So if this, we've already purchased some, a lot.
Yeah.
There's some other things we can continue doing that. It's, it's some of those future things that, you know, maybe we're talking about, but in time is an issue.
That's where I think, you know, at least from my standpoint, if I knew what kind of things you were thinking about or whatever, that we could say, yeah, this is COVID-related or, ah, maybe that's a stretch or, I don't know. Maybe you don't want to do that in open session or something, too. I don't know, so.
Well, and I think. I was going to say, I think some of that's dependent on what happens with the mask that Matt's looking at. If that's going to be everyone else going out and finding something different if they don't want that mask. I mean, I think that could play a big part in it.
I still think it'd be easier if we all, if we just, if Matt purchases for everybody. And law enforcement's going to need something different from.
It's not going to work for us. So if the one he's looking at, it's not going to work.
Well, I know, but I mean, still, yeah.
So I think that, that's going to play into what some of those purchases that are going to be somewhat immediate. If he's saying, I only have 60 days worth of this, then in 60 days, you're going to have to have something else in place.
Well, it's not fair to him to have the word all worked out. I mean, we have other dispositives.
Right.
The agencies can come and make their case, not that if you're through with that, it's concerned city or county or whatever, for that they know what's up for their employees and their environment. But they're not, right, ours are different. The CAREERS is going to, and it's that we operate through different rules. They just merge at different times. And so I think that's kind of, what we don't want to do is we don't want to tell the sheriff, hey, you have to get these things. But we also don't want the sheriff or anybody else to tell us, hey, you're going to have to get these things because we're different than they are. There's just too much. We all have different jobs. And so I think for us to at least continue to go through the county process internally for us until this all goes to the right move. Because we can at least come in and still keep that ball rolling.
I didn't think it's compatible. No, I just didn't have you do it. If he hasn't, if, if they need a special something, if JCPD needs something, then, then it's fine, but.
I will, but they all request behind it. It says people are getting the N95s outside of our maintaining. We need those put into the kitty because people, agencies are getting the N95s and they're not putting them into the kitty, right? So they're getting their own and keeping them, but yet we're maintaining a stock and then building out in N95s. If you're giving PPE, put that in the kitty for everybody because we're pushing it out to everybody. And so that's part of where, it doesn't help our calculations of have it, not have it, well, we got some, we don't have some, we got some extras, we didn't. It needs to come into this. If we're going to maintain that central PPE repository for everybody in the county, that means for everybody in the county and everybody that gets stuff needs to be put into the kitty then.
Are you representing the stuff that comes from EBS?
Wherever it comes from, donations from people that are, you know.
We have a guy in N95s in. I have, some have. You may not have, but some have. We've been supplied permanent at this point. I mean, we've tested about 500 people, and we have provided masks to all those departments.
Is there not getting any returns?
That would be correct.
So is that making the burn rate not able to track either?
It's harder for us to track, right? And different, if they get an N95 that's not the same type as what they're already having, then we got to look at. All right, you may have the N95 sizes that we're low in stock on that we can shift towards people who, so an example would be,
1860s.
1860s are harder for us to get than the 1860S's. Well, it's a different size, same model, different size. But a Moladex extra-small might be the same as an 1860, so then we can shift those around. So we, we have a good idea of this brand and this brand, these sizes are pretty close to each other. But if everybody's keeping their own stuff and not putting back into the kitty, eventually the kitty dries up, right? Where everybody else still has it and we're still kind of holding it. So if we're getting PPE in to any agency, we need to go into the central repository. And then it can get pushed out and then we manage because daily account and we look at, we need all that. If that's not happening, that's not your process. And at some point, we may end up hurting the whole thing, the entire group that's trying to respond to this. Because we may be able to, someone may have a size that we don't have at that moment in time because we could not obtain it. And we don't even know they have that size because it's sitting in a warehouse somewhere or it's sitting in a, a back room somewhere or whatever that is. PPE needs, if we're going, if we're going to be responsible for supply, it needs to come to where we have and we can push it. Not a single person has come and said, I need PPE. It's been told to them, inform us. So it's not, there's no reason to do it.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't have anything.
Can we give you some direction?
We need to sign that, or talk about that before I left.
Oh, yeah.
Done?
I got it.
Oh, the other thing that was on there for 2:30?
See, Larry, that's my shoestring. Doesn't it match your shirt? I've had my shots.
Leave that alone. It's a bottle made something. It has its own characteristics. Take care of that.
So this is a revolving loan fund for the Regional Planning Commission, and it was a financing opportunity through EDA. And anyway, it was a 95.5 grant. And so they're looking to have a $2.5 million revolving loan fund, of which 1 million would be for Columbia and 500,000 would be, could be for Cole County, Jefferson City. The match was 5% and Chamber had talked to me about us partnering with them to come up with the $25,000. I was trying to get some more information here. So some of the joining regional planning commissions have a revolving loan fund. And so funds designed to provide loan money to small businesses. In order to induce private lenders' participation, projects will retain or create employment. Some funds can be provided up to 40% of the funding, and sometimes there's a maximum. And then sometimes there's jobs attached to, to the funding as well. But I mean, it's, it's a good economic development opportunity. And I know most of the county commissioners in the six county region are, were pretty excited about it as well as some of the economic developers that are part of that group as well. I know it kind of sent something to you guys about it.
Yeah, you had to talk to me. I thought it was good. We, helping new businesses with economic development is.
How much is the whole thing? It's a half a million dollars?
Yes, it'd be a half a million dollars.
It's going to be in revolving.
Yeah.
So then.
For, for Cole County, Jefferson City.
We put in 12.5. That goes towards what? To help them?
To help with the match. So the EDA would come up with 95% of the funding, and we would have to come up with 5% of it. At least that's what the application would ask for. And most time, it's an 80/20 match, and this was something that David Bach, who's the director up there, talked to me about. And so just a good opportunity to help local businesses get a loan or maintain a loan or, or opportunities for them to, to, to be successful and.
So is this guaranteeing their loan or this is part of their?
No, this is part, it's part of a, it's part of a loan. So the whole 500,000 would be a loan that the RPC would then administer and be able to reuse once the loans were repaid, and it would just continue for perpetual. But there'd be a million dollars for Columbia, Boone County, because they were going to put in $50,000 to cover their match. And there'd be a million dollars for the other, other regions within the six counties, so.
I think it's good. I think it's good. I think it's good. I think it's good.
I guess I don't understand it. Uh, it seems like this is something the banks should be doing, not the counties or the bank of Cole County here to loan people money. If it's a small business needing a loan, then they can go ahead and get an investor to help them. If it's, you know, twelve thousand five hundred in five hundred thousand dollars, that's not much. So I don't necessarily see it as a, something the government is, you know, be involved in here. We're picking winners and losers kinda in my book on it, so. And I just may not know enough about it.
Right. Well, I mean.
You need to know something today or?
Yep, always, always in a hurry, so.
I'm gonna know today, so.
Yeah.
So our portion would be twelve-five and then is the Chamber doing twelve-five?
That's correct, yeah.
To make up the twenty-five?
Total twenty-five thousand dollars, which would create the, if the grant was successful, then there'd be a half a million dollars to loan, um, in Cole County, Jefferson City.
Thank you. Just give us a grant for all of it. We gotta hold out twenty-five thousand.
That's really not that much. I'm, I'm in favor of it, so if you make a motion.
What are, what are we getting out of it?
I feel good. Don't you feel better?
Economic development.
It is. I said it is, it is economic development.
For who? What are you getting out of it? There's, that they get the loan and stay in business, then can't they get the loan themselves or what's?
Sometimes loans are a little, little marginal in what the bank will be willing to lend. And so this is kind of a gap, gap financing, um, but, you know, obviously, they're not gonna make some real risky loan, but sometimes banks will only go out and loan so much of, of what they're wanting to do. And so this, uh, kinda pulls that other partner in, um, you know. You just talked about a private partner. Well, this is kinda your private partner.
So this would be an investment, so then what's our return on it?
Sales tax, sales tax they pay and property tax they pay.
What if they're a service? There's no sales tax on it. What if they're gonna go into carpentry and there's no, there's no sales tax on that?
They're buying goods.
Not necessarily. They all want to buy the goods and they're doing that anyway. I got all day.
Make a motion, I'll second.
Why could you argue earlier?
Make a motion, I'll second.
I said I miss another day.
Alright. I move that we sign the letter in support of the revolving loan fund match commitment.
Second.
Coming out of economic development.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Nay.
Okay. Is there anything else? You got your taser on, you sheriff?
Nope, I got it.
Hey.
Fifteen rounds, one of the bitches.
Sign that thing.
Let me move first.
Is there anything else?
No, we stand in recess till four thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Because I think everybody else signed it.